Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is nine o'clock on the sixteenth of March, and I'm going to call the town meeting in Croydon, Florida. Uh, their first order of business. I'd like you to please join me in the place where you would prefer. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his will, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah. Thank you very much. As this is my first unexpected foray into being moderator, I'd like to take the moment of silence for Bruce Jasper, who passed away rather unexpectedly in December. So, if you would, please. Okay, thank you. Today, due to technology, we are not going to livestream the town meeting. However, Paul has got the equipment set up, so it's going to be recorded, and then he will put it online later this afternoon. So with that, let's get to business. To the voters of the town of Croydon, county of Sullivan, and the state of New Hampshire, qualify to vote on town affairs. You are hereby notified to meet at Croydon Town Hall, eight seventy-nine, New Hampshire Route ten, in said Croydon, New Hampshire, on Tuesday, the twelfth day of March, twenty twenty-four, at eleven o'clock in the forenoon. Call is not to close earlier than seven o'clock in the afternoon. You act upon Article One and to meet said hall on Saturday, the sixteenth day of March, twenty twenty-four, at nine o'clock in the forenoon, and act upon remaining articles. As you know, the election was held Tuesday, and the results have been posted. So we'll start the business off with Article Two, paving of Cass Street. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred thirty-four thousand dollars for the repaving of Cass Street and to authorize the issuance of not more than four hundred thirty-four thousand of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three. And to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest they're on. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars for the first year's bond payment. A three-fifths ballot vote is required, and it's recommended by the select board. What is your pleasure?
I move Article Two, paving of Cass Street. Question?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. It's their discussion. I might remind you that this article was on the war last year, and it was passed. However, the problem was, we did not take a ballot vote which been verified three-fifths, uh, count. So the lawyers said, no, you can't carry on with this warrant. So that money was, you know, even though it was authorized, we could not spend it. So that's why it's coming back to you this second year. Yes, ma'am?
Um, are there any other stipulations that go along with the paving? Because last year, when we had voted to do this, several people, um, that live on Cass Street were kind of unexpectedly made aware that they had to do, um, uh, regrading of driveways or sewage work or things like that, kind of indirectly?
Uh, there's nothing that I know of. However, is the wrong career? Yes. Joe, can you speak to that, please?
And can we also ask people name and address?
There's a few issues with some pumping water out of the basements to the road, which is required, which the town does the home beyond the pavement, so we are allowed to get the homeowners' tenants to keep the water off the pavement.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the town clerk has reminded me that I need to have you state your name and your address so he can have the information in his minutes. So what's your name, please?
So I'm Cassandra Avery-Clyde, and I live on Cass Street.
Okay, thank you.
And Joe did do the dig, but I think there was one other home that, um, it was different. It wasn't sump pumping. It was the way that the driveway, the water coming down off of it.
Yeah, basically, what we want to do is ensure that whatever new roads we put in,
Yeah.
they're not going to get damaged right away because of improper grading stuff. Are you ready for the vote? Hearing no objections? We'll start the ballot process. Has everybody voted at this point? Okay. See, as you know, RSA requires us to keep the voting box open for an hour. It's going to sit there until the timer goes off. At that point, I will have the ballot clerks start the counting process. In the meantime, we can take up other business and announce the results after the hour has passed. So Article Three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. It is recommended by the select board. What is your pleasure?
I move Article Three, General Operations, question?
And we have a motion to make, and a second, so discussion is appropriate at this point. And if you would, please step up the microphone and announce your name and... Okay, thank you.
Angie Goleo, Will Smith, Barton Higginson, Barton R. I just want to know what page, um, to find all this.
There was a separate green sheet to accompany this. It is...
Thank you.
Mine's taken on page five.
So the green, the green sheet replaces page five?
Yeah, the green sheet replaces page five. Go ahead, Angie.
So I have a question for Joe Goleo. Can you read? Joe? I have a question for you, Joe. I, um, my question is, I know that you operate with bare bones budget. So if you could increase your budget in any area, what would it be by how much?
Could be in my dirt road, maybe.
I'll do that.
Forty grand a year, brother. We can buy some real material.
I mean, I think, I think it's a valid conversation. All of our roads are messed right now. They are every year. They do the best that they can with what they have, which is bare bones. And I, I think it's time to have a discussion about that, about increasing that budget.
Angie?
Maybe, Joe, also, if we can find another gravel supplier. I know United is crushed, and we use Crushed, but they also want to charge way too much money. So maybe it's something we can research and get a better deal on material. Or we get tractor-trailer trucks loaded to the township for us to use, and that way we save on trucking.
The only place we're going to get the material lives in Lebanon. The problem with stockpile, I have no place to stockpile. Some spring, sometimes I got rivers running through the yard. Yeah, so let's...
Let's work on that and try to figure out.
Yeah.
So if we want to add any money to the budget?
If you want to add any money to the budget, you need to make a specific motion as to the amount you wish to add. But I will remind you that it cannot be added to a specific area. It's just the total, uh, amount of the budget. And the select board would be pretty much advised that that's where they'd like it to go. It does not... Mr. Morgan?
Hi, good morning, Croydon, Florida. So I was, um, I volunteer for the Budget Advisory Committee. Turn the hearing off. So I sat on the Budget Advisory Committee and formulated, helped to formulate this budget. And we did put more money into the budget for roofs. That's why the budget's increased. Um, there's also money in the reserve, in the capital fund, reserve funds. And what would probably be a really good idea is for the new select board with five members now to sit down and come up with a road plan and present that road plan to the voters next year, as opposed to just adding money willy-nilly now, because there's no allocation for that. And we have a reserve fund now with over four hundred thousand dollars in it, so if there's any emergencies, we can fund that easily without putting extra burden on the taxpayers. So it, it is in there. Um, we put more money in, and we need to develop some sort of a road plan for Joe and his team so that we can add money to that budget. That budget necessarily should be closer to three hundred thousand, not two hundred and forty thousand. But because of the reserve funds that we have, if there's any emergency, we have money to cover that. So to go in double dip probably is not the best idea. The best idea would be to look at this systematically over the next year and come back to the voters. Next March, you say, this is, this is the plan moving forward, because we had a lot of damage last year, that we had a lot of luck and getting fixed at a reasonable cost. And we're concerned, the budget committee was very concerned about what's going to happen this spring. Is this rain going to ever stop? I mean, I'd like to have some fun. So we do have emergency funds available. We do have money stuck away. So to just add money now really wouldn't be the most prudent thing to do. It would increase your taxes. Um, but he doesn't have a place to allocate right there. Joe, is that fair?
Right. And I have had Lebanon, Ruston, Compton. And they will, if we can set something up or something, they will bring in Corvoi tractor-trails and run it right down the middle of the road, and then I just break mine. So there is options. The wall we're buying from them costs the people we've built when that time comes. Yeah, just jumping it now is... We're pretty much past what we've told us.
Yes, ma'am?
Uh, thanks, Floyd, for Joe. I live on Trent High Road. And I just have a question on the, um, these new backhoes in the, in the town court. There was an amount there on the green sheet. There is one. And I just wondered if that is, um, not going to happen or if it's been included in the operating budget?
It's on the green sheet.
It's there, but there's no amount.
It's under a separate war article.
So it's on a...
So it, it doesn't cap that in the war article.
Okay.
They can't project the other questions.
Okay.
Here again. Can I move to amend?
Certainly.
I'd like to move to amend the budget by not forty, but twenty, since we already have an increase of twenty-three, because I don't want to wait for an emergency for my road to get fixed. I live on a dirt road. It's sometimes nearly impossible, and I want the road crew to be able to fix it this year after my season, or I have some time to actually spend on fixing it appropriately. So I will amend it by an increase of twenty-three thousand dollars.
Do I do a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, then we'll... Let me take a moment to mark up the article so they can quote on it appropriately.
Mr. Moderator, an increase of twenty thousand. Seven one five, three five. Okay, I got you.
So the first step is to vote on the actual motion to amend. So at this point, I will...
Who is the second?
It was motioned and seconded. May I have the name of the person who seconded it, please?
Barrett Walker, twenty-seven Brighton Lane.
Thank you. So all those in favor of amending the budget amount by twenty thousand dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
It appears the ayes have it. So now we will go back to the main motion. Are there any other amendments or questions on the main motion?
Good morning, Pope Damon Cat-Hop. Well, it's real rough. I can catch you that one line. So I just wanted to ask for some input on why the legal expense is, um, should have gone to work than occurring here? Expecting something?
Yes.
Who's going to answer? Paul speaks to that. As well, I was on the Budget Advisory Committee. Some of the legal expense that we anticipate, and it doesn't get sometimes, is we have a number of properties that are, uh, the town has taken by, uh, for non-payment of taxes. And the period of time has gotten to the point where we're going to start the process. However, some of them are encumbered in the fact that the person died not have a will. So that requires the lawyer to do a significant amount of research in order to appropriately find out if there's any surviving, uh, members of the family that would step forward to pay the taxes prior to the town taking the building.
Appreciate the explanation. And so it sounds like the end result would be we would sell those properties and we would offset the increase.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other budget ideas? Okay, then I'll take that as, uh, an indication we're ready to vote on the question. And it is for Article Three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. Recommended by the select board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Article Four, repair and maintenance of cemeteries. To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for cemetery maintenance and cemetery repairs. The funds to support this article are to be removed from the interest earned in the Henry J. Sawyer Memorial Fund and the Rubeau Memorial Fund. This is recommended by the select board. What is your pleasure?
I'm making a motion to move Article Four, repair and maintenance, cemeteries, question?
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Are there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we take the vote. All those in favor of... To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for cemetery maintenance and cemetery repairs. Funds to come, uh, for this article are removed from the interest earned from the Henry J. Sawyer Memorial Fund and the Rubeau Memorial Fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Article Five, adding capital reserve fund for revaluation. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars to be added to the town revaluation capital reserve fund. This is recommended by the select board. What is your pleasure?
I'm making a motion to move Article Five, adding the capital reserve fund for revaluation, question?
Second.
I'm here to motion and second. Any questions at this point?
Chris Bros, Camel Hump Road. Can someone, I'm assuming it's in here, but could someone point to which page? We're going to be going through these capital reserve funds. So I'm just wondering if there's a page in here that shows what is currently in all of them for everyone's knowledge?
So we believe, I believe it's the...
Or else I think it'll be a question every time.
Chris, I believe it's the MS nine and the MS ten that has those funds listed in there. I'm not sure what pages those are. You would have to check the index in the front.
Perhaps the trustees of the test plans could answer that a little bit quicker than looking them all up, because the MS nine and MS ten list all the individual funds, not just what's in a separate capital reserve fund easily.
Hi, I'm Susan Edwards, Pineville Row, also a dirt road. Um, the MS nine, make sure this, the capital reserve funds on page forty-nine. Sorry, it's in pine clear. This is the way the state came up to us this year. The town revaluation fund, as of year end, had a balance of... Thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars in assets.
Good morning, again, I'm still open. Um, do we have an idea of what revaluation will cost?
It's approximately twenty-five thousand as it's been to the past number of cycles. Uh, each year goes up a little bit, but we put away five thousand per year, and it happens every fifth year to do the townwide revaluation. That's what this, uh, is for.
I appreciate you putting it aside preemptively. That makes sense to me, but it sounds like we already have enough.
We've already been putting it away every year, so far.
I believe Sue read the wrong number. Looking at the report, I see two thousand fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents as the end-of-year balance for the town revalue count. Two thousand fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
I got a sheet that's given to me by the trustees earlier in the year, and it showed a balance of thirty-four thousand, three twenty. So we're just a little above what we expect. But I also expect that this year there'll be an increase, because they've been keeping it fairly level the past two townwide revaluations.
Susan Edwards, again, to receive, to understand the new report, if you look at the far right-hand column where it says E O Y, end-of-year balance, that's the balance for each of the capital reserve funds. And I don't know why underneath it says E O Y value zero, but the balance is the back line of fund that. It's thirty-four thousand, three twenty, nineteen.
So we must, we're due for our revaluation this coming year then? We're going to spend twenty-five thousand, it sounds like? Do we have a balance?
I believe our revaluation is next year. So, um, I'll have to check on that. It's not this a... We do a physical of the town per year, and then every five years, it's the whole town.
So that twenty-five thousand is based on twenty seventeen?
Yes.
Pre-pandemic number?
Right.
So no inflation in that, no wage increase in that. We have voted the, the company that does the evaluation to get it sanitized, correct?
Correct.
So that number could be doubled based on inflation. Right.
So we're doing the best we can by putting the money away, and hopefully we won't have to spend all of it. It's a good question. Any more questions? Are you ready for the vote? Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars to be added to the town revaluation capital reserve fund, and this is recommended by the select board. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carried. Article Six, to add to the capital reserve fund for town vehicles. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the town vehicles equipment capital reserve fund established in twenty nineteen, recommended by the select board. What is your pleasure?
I'm making a motion to move Article Six, add to the capital reserve fund for town vehicles, question? I accept.
The floor is open for discussion. Any questions? Hearing no questions, I'll take that as we'll vote to the vote. And this is Article Six, adding to the capital reserve fund for town vehicles. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the town vehicles equipment capital reserve fund established in twenty nineteen, recommended by the select board. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is carried. Article Seven, funds for the fire department. As I have received a petition requesting a ballot vote on this, that means we'll need to do it on this one as well.
But the box is forward count.
So what I would like to request the ballot clerks to do is, on this one, when people come up to get their ballot, give them three, because we're going to do two more ballot counts, because for the warrants that require a bond, we have to have a three-fifths.
Or my whole twice. People like, oh, twice, on accident.
Well, then I'll have to ask them to pass them out afterwards. So please bear with us. And, um, I'm going to request that the ballot box be put right up by the, uh, ballot clerk. So as soon as you get your ballot, you can put it right in the box at that point. I'm also going to request and guide the people through. I would request the first row, the second row, the next row, and hopefully get through this a little bit quicker. Okay, do the rearrangement of the room and stuff and where the ballot box is, and request that people go in a counterclockwise direction. And that way they can get their ballot and feed the box. Let's not, I'll take your questions in just a moment. And then, like I said, I'm going to request the first row, the second row, and so forth, all down so we can extract, get the hold of that.
The box been emptied yet for the last ballot? No, not now. We're doing that.
We're going to check the time first. Hang on.
We have twenty-two minutes left on that.
Looks like we're going to have to find a different ballot box, and we still have twenty-two minutes on the first ballot. Well, we're holding a little bit, because number one, right now, we're still on the hour timeframe where we need to count the ballots and have the ballot process opened on the first one. So we can either just wait for twenty minutes, or we can work at the ballot... Or we can work, the ballot clerks work up a separate box so we can have a rate, sharing-
Why don't we discuss the fire department?
In the, in the idea of expediting this, let's move on to the discussion of the fire department. And then hopefully we'll have enough time to finish the hour and then get ready to vote.
I have a-
So I'm gonna read through the whole article and then start. I'll remind you, right now we do not have a motion on the floor, therefore there's no discussion on this part of it, so. Yes. Yes.
I'd like to clarify the board's position. You will not recommend by the floor. The only reason we did that is because we took a lot of heat last year for this. And we wanna step back and let you the voters decide and have no, no influence either way. So with that said.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the motion and we can open discussion. And then we'll see if the time has elapsed for the first vote. Is this a question on the motion that's coming up?
It's a question on the ballots before we get to this question.
Okay.
I'm just curious, are the ballots all the same color?
No. Thank you for asking that question, getting clarification. Okay. Add us to Article seven. This is a special article. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of having a contract for services, fire and EMS with the current fire department for the town of Creighton. The appropriated funds will help with the stabilizing personnel and their time and costs for service. And as it was listed in here, it was not recommended by the select board. What is your pleasure?
I make the motion to move Article seven, funds for the fire department.
Seven. Okay, we have a motion and seconded. And I'm gonna ask Jason to speak to this first of all before, and hopefully he'll answer all of your questions.
Jason Rockfire, G two ten. Have everybody heard Amy's answer to why it wasn't recommended? She can answer it to the air. I've heard a lot of grief, gotten a lot of grief over the years. And I'm so tired of hearing, oh, you guys got millions, you can do what we want. So I'm gonna kind of lay a few numbers out here, they're not all exact or close. So you get an understanding of how we operate, what our costs are, and why I'm asking for this money. So as of March first, we have two point two million dollars in investments on with Benjamin Edwards. Out of that two million dollars, we get, sorry, hold on.
It's all written down.
Out of that, forty-five hundred dollars a month goes into an account that we operate out. That's it, forty-five hundred dollars. Also, out of the investments right now, ten thousand dollars a month is coming out to pay for the new tanker that we bought last year. And I'm gonna tell you right now, that thing paid off for itself this year with no problems. We have three stretch partners in our town. And with that amount of water that we have, we were able to save those people's houses. Who want to make a point for that? Sorry, my fingers are screwed up. Our general bills, so out of that forty-five hundred a month, which holds fifty-four thousand dollars a year. Our insurance is sixteen thousand six hundred. Our propane and oil to heat the place is a little over five thousand. Our electric is over four thousand. Office materials are close to five hundred dollars. Maintenance, mostly on the trucks, is close to ten thousand, a little over nine thousand. Communications, which is internet, phone, fax, radios and stuff like that, is around four thousand. Our medical supplies that we have to replenish once we go to medical calls and use whatever we use, is over two thousand dollars. Misalini supplies, gloves, boots, vests, odds and ends that we just need to get throughout the year, is all over five thousand. And I put five hundred dollars a month into an account called a truck account. So when we are ready to buy a new vehicle or replace something, there's money there. And that's six thousand dollars a year. So that total amount is fifty-two thousand eight hundred. That gives us twelve hundred dollars at the end of the year. And I can tell you right now, we go beyond that just because of the cost of other things. Yep.
Equipment.
Our new tanker, like I said last year, that we got was three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Just to give you an idea of stuff, a set of firefighting gear, one set of gear, boots, coat, jacket, helmet. That's only good for ten years, and then F P A says it's no good anymore and it has to be replaced. Whole set of gear is four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. One air pack, we can put an air pack on to go into your burning building and help save and do what we can, ninety-five hundred dollars. A new cardiac monitor, which we need because our current one is eight years old and no one will service it because of its age. We get a new one, then they'll service our old one. But a new cardiac monitor, which is very important to our R N Ts, is forty thousand dollars just to purchase them. Medical supplies, like I said, run between two and four thousand dollars a year. A new engine that we are currently looking at, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the possibility of new engine. And that's actually cheap. That changed.
Town is currently-
Okay. Just so you know, because I've also heard, oh, we're private, we're private. You are currently now contracted with a private company. New London Ambulance is a private entity. And you're paying them thirty-seven thousand plus a year for them to come when you have a medical problem. Last year they responded to seventy-five calls in this town. That works out for an average of five hundred dollars a call to have that service. For the twenty thousand that I'm asking for, we did a hundred and forty-eight calls last year. And this year already, in our first sixty days, we've done thirty-three calls. That's a lot for this little town. And most of them work here in this town. That worked out to about a hundred and thirty-five dollars a call is what your twenty thousand dollars last year was paying. Money will go directly to the members for their response time and two hours of training that we do every month. This is to keep their certification, keep training them. Things change all the time in the fire service, and we have to stay up to date with that, and it all comes from that. We do have members that are able to leave their full-time paying job to respond to calls when they're able to. And the last couple fires we had, we had at least six members that all left their paying job to come assist you. They're losing money. Their job's not continually paying them while they leave. So this is why it's important to keep continuing paying our members, because now the volunteer isn't, it's not there anymore. So last year, our payroll came to actually twenty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Not looking for more, just letting you know, it went above and beyond that twenty thousand. That's when we have to pull more money out to make sure our members are paid. Just so you know, the base pay for our members is fifteen dollars an hour. And they get a dollar more per certification they hold. If they're an E M T, they get another dollar. If they're a level one firefighter, they get another dollar, and so on.
No, I have my stuff.
I know- I can answer that question.
Please, I would like to give the fire teams.
Right, so as a volunteer firefighter, captain of fire department, my pay from this department was two thousand dollars last year being volunteered. To Lebanon right now, I just looked into it just because I have my E M T license. And they only gave their members, my certifications, at fifty-six thousand a year. That's Lebanon, and over pays more, besides some less side. But my pay last year was just under two thousand dollars, like we passed one, so probably fourteen hundred dollars.
Thank you. I wanted to-
Yes. Newport, I believe, their full-time paid firefighters are around twenty-six to twenty-eight dollars an hour. Can I finish up and then we'll do questions?
Yep.
Well, I'll make an exception for you then. What's your question?
I just wanna know if Hanover, Lebanon, and fire departments are private entities like you guys are.
No, but Wilma is a private entity, Wilma Fire Department. And there is one more in New Hampshire that's private, and I'm not sure which town it is. So there are still private fire departments out there.
I don't have a problem with private, I just wanna know why they get so much money is because they're a town entity.
Okay, well, let me answer you this last question then, okay? Other towns around us, Granton, they're a hundred and thirty-seven thousand for their fire, a hundred and ninety-six thousand for their EMFs. Their average pay to their members is sixty-four thousand dollars a year. I took these towns that have average amount of calls as us non-population, about the same amount. And these are just rough numbers because their websites aren't the greatest. Goshe pays sixty-one thousand dollars a year. Corners who's ninety-one thousand, Lexer fifty-seven thousand dollars. This doesn't include when they need air packs, gear, new fire trucks or anything. That's just their average. So being private, I feel like you guys are lucky. If we're not private, this town would be looking at another hundred, hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year to have a fire department that operate. And then I'd be coming to you saying, alright, I need a new truck this year. Now you come up with another seven hundred and fifty thousand. So asking for twenty thousand dollars to me is pretty cheap. Alright, I'll, I'll do questions.
Yes, everybody's gotta use the mic to state your name if you have questions.
Kim McKinnney, St. John's Cathedral. My question is, how much of your funding comes from grants?
Some of it does, we're working on more and more. We did get a set of new Jaws, battery-operated Jaws last year that all came from a grant. We just got accepted for a grant for a forestry year that we're working on. We're working on a grant for doing some of that.
Okay, thank you. So I just, we have this, did you get forty-five? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not naming. So forty-five hundred dollars a month, which equals fifty-four thousand dollars a year, that's from your whatever.
Interest basically.
From interest, so you're right in line with these other towns at fifty-four thousand. And then we have a twenty K, so that'd be seventy-four thousand. And then insurance, don't confuse them, last year we were told that the town pays their insurance.
No, town pays for workers' comp, and it pays for our fee.
And taxes, right?
Yes.
And all the taxes on all the fire, fire department properties. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I do wanna point out though, that is right, right in line with some of the towns that live up there, fifty-four thousand.
It is, it is in line, but however, it isn't also because that did not include paying our members. Which I said came in twenty-six thousand, so you can add another twenty-six.
But because of that, we're thinking that's in there too. That's in their budget.
It is, no, it is not. I did not, the fifty-four thousand was just our electric and other basic pay.
You put the other town's budget out there?
Right, and that was rough. Like I said, their websites were confusing. I guarantee they're probably more than that. But that was for their kind of operations.
Are there any other questions? We still have five minutes to go before we can have the ballot clerks get busy counting the first four articles, so.
I have a second question, and I'm getting my taxes in here, and I won't do it. He's not gonna sit here and want his money to be. Get up to the microphone and say. I, I have a question, that's all I have. Will you talk to me like that?
Okay. Good morning, Phil, I'm Silhumproad. So I'm just gonna stand up and say I support the funding to the fire department. It is a critical situation across the country, actually, that there aren't enough volunteer firefighters entities. I think it's complicated to sort out from public, private. And I would ask Jason next year, all that you put up there, explain to us should be in here. So that we all can review and understand. So I respectfully ask that. Thank you.
It looks like we have a comment from the, from the members of the ballot group.
And it's related, it's not necessarily about the twenty thousand, but it's a fire question. So is it working into that now?
Oh, yeah.
I'll say along with that.
We've got the five minutes, though.
But I just had a question, not necessarily, oh, I'm sorry, Lynch and Shaq, hey, we're good. About, it's, fire budget, Jake, so really, it's not a budget question, but along with how great it will be to have a more detailed report, so people don't have to ask as many questions, they know what you do. Is, and I don't know if this is a call breakdown as well, because I look at that and it makes me nervous about how many fires we have, how many accidents do you have? You know, what were minor things that you need to check on? And not in an intrusive way, but just in a town curious way, of what you guys are doing in that little house.
I agree with that. This year, I, my letter in the report and this was more information for things and questions I heard over the years kind of explained. I have no problem, I will do a breakdown next year of our call.
Yes, please state your name.
Sean Douglas, Frank Hillrood. So as we went over, Jason just said, we are putting out a, starting to put out a monthly on our Facebook page of how many calls we go on to. So it's fire calls, medical calls, mutual aid, and others. So it's been, we'll go for that, we are in the middle of working on that. That's on B, we're in the middle of doing some grants, I didn't get a chance to put that out there. But it's starting next month, we will start out now.
Kevin Morrison.
When you guys respond to calls from other towns, is there compensation coming to you from all those calls from those towns for that support?
No, there is not.
Is there always compensation for money you get from any town?
Correct. However, like I said, when those towns come to us and insist to us, we're not paying them. We'll start out as a system, kind of one hand off to the other. If it wasn't for mutual aid, we would have lost all of the-
Susan Edwards, Pardell Row. Jason, I know that when ambulances make calls and transport people, they can bill medical insurance. Is there any recourse like that for any of your fire services? A whole range of things that you provide that you can file for reimbursement?
I believe there is, but it's a lot of work, a lot of paperwork. I honestly don't know how that would work. I don't know any other town that does do that. Put it that way.
Thank you.
I have one, just a comment about what just happened over here. Town meeting is to, for everybody to come together, express your opinion, and cast your vote. And I don't think that getting harassed or spoken to, the way that just happened, is acceptable or appropriate at all. And I'm pretty disappointed that you didn't step in and say something about it and stop it. Let's have some respect, everybody, and yeah, just respect each other. I'm pretty disappointed in what just happened.
Thank you. How much time do we have, anyway?
Everyone's gonna have their opinion, and I'm, I'm-
We have, we have two more.
We have two minutes left before the ballot.
I think that the ballot clerks can begin their count, and then in the meantime, I think that they can, they can start their count.
I'm gonna ask the ballot clerks to please start the counting process on that first ward.
There has to be a lot of people in this room that have just started to talk about town laws.
May I?
And because I'm one of them, my work was okay today. I was gone most of the day, he was at my house, he's eighty-four years old. And he collapsed, and I came home and found him on the floor in the kitchen. They were there within seconds. And I cannot tell you the relief I had when I was there. We have a great fire department here who have done nothing beyond the fire department, they've done other activities and everything. We need to support them as far as I'm concerned.
Hi, Jim Heskey, Bart Rowe. I'm on, I've been on debate with Tom Sartre actually, and I completely support what Adam just said, it's sort of a kind of game, I thought, don't put up with that crap.
What?
Don't put up with that crap.
Never, ever.
Okay, let's speak first here. And anyway, then, I'm not really for or against this proposal, but I'm a little disturbed by the answer about not having, not having a solid opinion about options for grants. Regrettably, that's how things work these days for the government. Grant this, grant this, take the money from Kentucky, give it to California, take it from Missouri, give it to Arkansas. It sucks, but if we don't play the game, we lose out. And I think, compared to some of the bigger numbers that were up here, twenty grand is the whole pie currently. And how much can we cut into that if we were smarter about pursuing those options? And again, talking about other private, private systems, might we want to revisit at some point how much we do for the fire department versus others? That whole arrangement looks like it might be worth reviewing, not necessarily that we change anything, but it's got a question mark here. So I don't know how I feel about this argument, I wanted to bring that up.
The timer has come.
Hi, Susan Edwards, Mr. Monta Major, on this point that we're doing the ballot, does this ballot have to stay open for an hour?
No, this ballot does not have to stay open for an hour, that is only the RSN requirement upon over a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Sean Douglas, Frank Hillrood. Back to that question about grants that you just came up and said, so I mostly do grants myself with Jason and Zach. We're not guaranteed, we can spend thousands of hours writing a grant, and we're not guaranteed that grant. The grant for the fire truck they were applying for, they're only giving that to five states. Last year, I believe there was a hundred and thirty-seven towns that applied and only two got the grant. So we can, we can spend countless hours and hours doing these grants, and we don't get any grant. So, we do, we are smart, we do go try to do these grants, sometimes we don't get them. We, like Jason said, we did get the four-streep one, that provides two thousand dollars for the four-streep year, but we don't have to come out of pocket, we're the county, we don't have to come out of pocket. So we are smart, we do our grants, just wanna kind of throw that out there. Oh, and right now, we are currently working on five different grants, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't get paid for that at all.
Yes, and with that, not being guaranteed grant, whatever we're going for a grant for, that's, I'll bring up the monitor, forty thousand dollars. We don't get a grant for it, we still need, we still need to purchase that at some point. We can't wait forever for a grant, so it has to be boxing, no way or no. There's more money to work going out than that counts.
Yes, Angie?
Can we move the question?
Okay, we have a, I have a motion, do I have a second to move the question? Okay, so, first thing is, I have a motion and a second to move the question. Which means, we will vote on question of Article Seven. So is, all in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All opposed? Okay, so, you need to get the ballot clerk set to accept the next ballot. Because this was requested to have a ballot vote per five holders in the test. Are you ready back there? Is the ballot box?
Yes.
Yeah, the hour is relaxed. Do you have enough people to hand out additional, different colored at this point, or do you wish to wait at the moment?
Now, you're so close to being downed that I asked you just.
Okay, the ballot clerks are requesting the additional time, so if you just stare with them for a few more minutes, you can get the first article dealt with, and it'll be out of our hands.
Sue is very happy with your decision.
Sue is very happy with your decision.
Two and a half.
I agree, but let's think this in choir. They have to read the calendar.
So what would be? Two point six, so if we have a hundred and eleven.
This ballot doesn't make a difference, George.
Yeah, it's according public and it's the, um, it's, yeah, it's six zero three. It's, um, according to public and it's six zero three eight six seven eight.
Amy, do you have a time?
Okay, voting has been completed by ballot for Article seven. And Article seven passes from seventy-eight to twenty-four. So Article seven, the work for the fire department has passed.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate everybody's support. If you want to do support, it's fine. Not your house, you haven't heard.
Okay, Article eight. To add to the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established, recommended by this elector. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to move Article eight add to the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund. Question. I second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. That means discussion is open. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions. Article eight, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established, recommended by this elector. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion is carried. Article nine, replace Boulder Vale Rib Road Bridge. This requires a three-fifths vote, however, it does not require a paper ballot. So we'll be able to do a, raise the cards and let the ballot cards count. So, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and two dollars to repair the bridge on Boulder Vale Road. With one hundred thousand dollars to come from the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund. Additionally, eighty thousand, eighty seven, eighty thousand forty-three dollars to come from the unassigned fund balance. This represents the care's money received in twenty-twenty-one. And to authorize the issuance of not more than fifty-eight thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three. And to authorize the municipal officials to enter and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand five hundred and ninety dollars for the first year's bond payment. This is recommended by this elector and a three-fifths ballot vote, a three-fifths vote is required. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion. I make a motion to move Article nine to pay Boulder Vale Road Bridge to question.
I'll say it.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. The time for discussion. It does not require a paper ballot. It simply requires a three-fifths vote.
Yeah.
Okay, Brenda.
Brenda Williams, Croydon, Trenton Brook Road. We have another bridge in town that is in severe disrepair at the moment. And that is the one on Brighton Road. And I think we should fix that before we do this Boulder Vale Bridge. Because Boulder Vale has two entrances to get to the houses up there.
Then, uh, so we have already, last year, we voted to repair Brighton Bridge. We've been waiting because of the floods last summer. We've been waiting on the state for the permitting. I just, and we've already paid for that bridge to be repaired. So I have been in contact with my Canton, that Canton Bridge. And I've got to get a bunch of approvals again so they can start the permitting and that's moving forward very soon. So both will be looking.
Okay.
And in regards to Boulder Vale, having to make things exponentially more difficult for the fire department, not knowing which end they can access homes on that road from. So that's just something to consider as well.
Are there any other questions? Are you ready for the motion? Okay, Article nine, to replace Boulder Vale Road Bridge. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and two dollars to repair the bridge on Boulder Vale Road. With one hundred thousand dollars to come from the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund. And eighty thousand forty-three dollars to come from the unassigned fund balance. This represents the care's money received in twenty-twenty-one. And to authorize the issuance of not more than fifty-eight thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three. And to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand five hundred and ninety dollars for the first year's bond payment. Recommended by this elector, three-fifths ballot vote, no, three-fifths vote required. So, all in favor, hold your blue cards up and let the ballot cards count.
No, only people that look.
We only need to get over sixty-five, right? Are they counting everything?
Kim, the blue cards are only for frightened people.
Are you ready for the negatives? Okay, all opposed to the motion, please raise your cards. That was easy. So, the motion passes. I need the numbers though, we handed to Paul. So, okay, thank you very much. That moves us on to.
Top coat.
Putting a top coat on Croydon's North Road, which is Article ten. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-eight thousand dollars for the top coat paving of Croydon Brook Road. And to authorize the issuance of not more than forty-eight thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three. And to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and determine the rate of interest. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars for the first year's bond payment. Three fifths ballot, uh, three fifths votes required, recommended by this select board. All in favor, our discussion first. This is the top coat on Croydon Brook Road. Please.
I make a motion to move Article ten, put top coat on Croydon Brook Road to question.
I'll say it.
I already wrote Kim.
Certainly, uh, Amy, please.
Um, just, so as we all know, we lost Brook Road last year in the flood. Um, and the money to repair, to get the, um, initial coat down on the pole works was paid out of our, um, reserve fund. So it is not an impact on the fact it didn't add to the budget. Um, so this is just to seal that and make that be the last one there.
Okay, Jim?
I have the question, answer the question.
Oh. Are there any other questions? Are you ready for the questions?
Do we want to sprinkle?
All in favor.
Can we get a speed?
I'm going to read it again. Uh, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-eight thousand dollars for the top coat paving of Croydon Brook Road. And to authorize the issuance of not more than forty-eight thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three. And to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars for the first year's bond payment. All in favor, raise your blue card, please.
I'm setting a standard.
All opposed. That motion carries. Thank you very much. I've never won the ballot cards, I do need a number for the minutes. Article eleven, lease new backhoe. To see if the town will vote to authorize your selectmen to enter into a five-year lease agreement. In the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the purpose of the DCB backhoe. And to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose. To come from the town vehicles and equipment capital reserve fund. This lease agreement contains an escape clause, recommended by the selectors. Majority vote required. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to move Article eleven, lease new backhoe question.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. It's open for discussion. Yes?
Angela Allison Hayward-Rose. I'm just wondering why, um, the option to lease versus purchase since we have money in the capital reserve fund.
Mr. Morgan votes, present some information for you.
So, um, when you look at the financing options for the backhoe. The interest rate for the lease with a dollar buyout at the end was two and a half basis points, twenty-five basis points less. So two and a half percent less than going through sugar or bank or any other bank. Um, so it actually saved money, um, doing it that way. And so the lease is a, is a, is a dollar buyout lease, so the payments are the same for, for the four years and then the fifth year it's one dollar. So this actually saved the town about thirty-eight hundred dollars. Not a big difference, but a decent difference.
So it's how many, the money in the capital reserve fund are almost all of it?
No, so.
For cash?
Yep. So if you deplete the capital reserve fund, he needs a dump truck next year or the year after. So the logical, the logical way to do that, as opposed to depleting the fund completely, is to utilize the fund to pay the lease payment. And that will keep the tax basis level. So even if he buys the dump truck and we lease that, the twenty-five thousand a year shouldn't be able to sustain the payments because of the amount of money that we have in the capital reserve fund. So we have about a hundred thousand dollars in there. And if you add twenty-five thousand a year, that'll cover the lease payments, so the capital reserve fund won't drop. And then in two years, when we put the dump truck on, that hundred thousand that's in there will help pay that lease payment as well. So the idea is to try to sustain the twenty-five thousand without having to increase it over the long period of time. Because if one lease, if one lease relaxes, the other lease will, will continue. A hundred thousand would be depleted in year four to about twenty-four thousand and then it would stay at that level throughout the remaining five years of the dump truck lease. That's kind of how you look at it.
Amy?
It's also going to help to keep our equipment maintainable. We can rotate it out more often.
Um, Kim, Kenny, Cass Street. Are we currently leasing a backhoe now? And if so, so we don't have a backhoe?
We have a backhoe, yeah.
Okay, so how old is the current backhoe?
It's an eighteen.
Two thousand and eighteen?
Pushing five thousand hours, probably sixteen thousand miles. And get you.
Okay, so we own that?
That's gonna be used as a trade-in.
Okay, so yeah, that was happy. Okay, seventy-five thousand traded?
Yeah.
Wow, nice.
That's how you get running when they're still in good shape for junk and can't have the most.
So I just have a question about it, like...
Who are you?
Oh, I'm still in the league and I still live at the burn hell. Are we raising the twenty-five thousand? We did, we voted for the equipment and trucks. And so this twenty-five thousand is coming from that reserve fund? And then we're raising another hundred and thirteen to like put back in? I don't understand what happened.
No, but...
Tell them all.
Total...
Coming up here.
Yeah.
So you're putting twenty-five thousand dollars, which we already voted for, into the capital reserve fund. That puts the capital reserve fund up to about a hundred and thirty, talking about forty thousand. Then you're voting now to take the first year's lease payment out of just twenty-six thousand. That maintains that balance over those years. And then when you add the next truck in, the balance is gonna help offset that so that we can keep the level funding for the next seven years, basically. That's the plan.
So Jim, is this lease to own?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. To clarify that, at the end of a hundred years, it's a dollar buyout and we own the, the equity that's in that machine to trade it in again or to keep it for under two or three years and trade it in at that point in time. But I know that sometimes you see purchase versus lease and you don't... In this particular case, this is a municipal lease and it happens to go with a dollar buyout at the end. So you're basically just taking the, the, the value of the machine, which is around two hundred thousand, subtracting the seventy-five thousand for the trade-in, and the balance, we're just paying off over five years. It's pretty much dividing the payment by five and then adding the, the interest rate onto that. So it's all a buyout.
And so last year, we voted for fifty thousand in the vehicles fund. And this year, instead of doing the fifty thousand, we're doing the twenty-five, and then the backhoe payment is like twenty-five. So it's, it's kind of a wash, and it's very much helpful.
Susan Edwards up on Cine Hill Road, and I'm gonna give on the dirt portion. Um, I love the idea of doing this. I'd like to take a moment to express my appreciation to Joe and Jo for keeping our road. And in addition, thank you for so much maintenance on the work, on the vehicles to allow us to get seventy-five thousand dollar trade-in on a used backhoe.
Any other questions? Are you ready for the motion? To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to enter into a five-year lease agreement in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the purpose of leasing a backhoe and to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose to come from the town vehicles and equipment capital reserve fund. This lease agreement contains an escape clause, recommended by the select board. Majority vote required, so it's a lot easier. So, all in favor, please say the bottom of their raising your card. All those opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Article 12. Review the master plan. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of updating the master plan. This is recommended by the select board. Majority vote required. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to move Article 12, review master plan, question.
The motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
So could you just give us a little background, when was the master plan last, um, updated? And who would be the board, who would we collaborate with?
Hi, I'm Jim Ornell, actually the sitting chairman right now of the planning board. Uh, while Larry is down in Texas and doing the warm weather. Um, so a master plan, the last master plan that was done for the town of Croydon was done in nineteen eighty-nine. The state of New Hampshire requires a master plan for the town to be updated every ten years. So, we'll work with, um, we'll work with the planning folks to find a consulting firm to come in and basically do the, um, the, the consultation with, with the citizens. This is a process that takes sixty-nine months. You have visioning sessions and you have different things. And quite frankly, the master plan's not gonna change much, I don't think, from the feeling of the community about what we want or what we need. We obviously want to keep taxes low and we want to keep development low. So, but, but there's a lot of other things that culminate in the master plan that help the select board move forward with government. So the input that you put into the master plan, all the things that you talk about is really the guideline for the select board to work from. So that if the select board goes down a road that the town didn't support, you just pull out the master plan and you say, this is not for the master plan. We gotta talk about this. We ever voted on this. And that's why you do it every ten years, because you do an update. The consulting firm is what the fifteen thousand is for. They'll, they'll put together the master plan, they'll print it. Everybody will work to do it, and then all of, all of the residents of Croydon can participate in that process.
Jim Hesch, uh, Bart Road. That answer was a great segue into my comment. Um, review master plan, you added so much to this paragraph. It's great. But look at itself, it sounds like something a bond builder would say. Okay, I've seen Mike Myers in a gray suit, a model of a Persian cat, talking about stories of master plan. Uh, I've heard the number nineteen eighty-nine before, referenced to other articles. We've been kind of mechanistic in this meeting, which is good when you're dealing with money. It's the right way to do it. But based on this and things that have been going on in the past year or two in town, and I want to draw for people, uh, reference also Articles fourteen and fifteen, I'm bothered by a trend that I'm hearing in the town. There, there seems to be a underheard of, let's turn Croydon into Claremont. There's a kind of, yes, there is. We, we, we certainly need five selectmen, when three work for us forever. We need to do road plan, we need master plans, we need twice as many, uh, people on this board, that board, the planning board. We need to redo rules that have worked for us for decades. And, uh, I'm disturbed by the, the conference law. No, there's no one article that really rates that much. But the sum of it, and the sum of the activities, the sum of direction we're going, makes me ask myself if people are not trying to push us in that direction. Now admittedly, I'm a little sensitive to it personally, because I grew up in the Tyler counties of Chicago and could name two to three dozen towns. And in my childhood, were cute little towns like Croydon. And I know with dumps, I won't use Donald Trump's term, a build of high taxes, crime, and pollution because the developers outsmarted the town and maneuvered into pollution. Now I don't know if that's happening here. I'm actually hoping that it's just people who like rules. Okay, it's, it's silly, but it's also relatively harmless. But I am concerned, and I think we need to tread very carefully. I don't know why we need a new master plan. I don't know why we need the old one, frankly. But as far as pulling it to the board, the board is not legally bound. They are legally bound, the record of the public, regardless of what the people pay for it. I don't think most of us even knew about this before it came up. So I don't know how functional it is to build a master plan. It really isn't gonna make, ruin my day if this gets voted in. But I think in the coming months and years, I, we need to be careful. We seem to be moving in a big overly regulated direction in this town, and I think it's gonna bite us in the butt. Is it being done on purpose? I don't know. But I would definitely think twice before supporting that, or even frankly, before, you know, fifteen.
I was gonna say, you're really telling me. Uh, so I would just like to ask, um, if we stayed with nineteen eighty-nine master plan and we voted to start a new master plan, that the town actually start the process of becoming participants of the National Flood Program? Especially after this summer, I know that I am not the only problem, the only house who had a problem. And it costs me, you know, a thousand dollars a year because Croydon is one of the handful of people in the entire United States who does not participate in this program. Um, I've been told over and over again that there's no flood property in Croydon. And that obviously is not true. So, uh, again, whether we continue with the nineteen eighty-nine plan or move forward with a new one, the master plan, I feel, has got to include participating with the National Flood Program. Yes?
Um, Chris Rose, Campbell Hump Road, and also on the planning board. I just wanted to talk about this idea of like, these things are gonna try to move Croydon into becoming a Claremont. In actuality, it's more the opposite. It's getting the town's input in this master plan that hasn't been updated in thirty years to kind of reassert what the master plan from that time did say, which was basically, you don't want to be the next Claremont. And so, you know, you can think about it either way, but I think, you know, getting, putting in the work to do that, um, like we said, it's supposed to be done every ten years. It hasn't been done. Um, and like Jim said, probably the responses and things are gonna be pretty similar in terms of the vision and common wants, but we really don't know at this point. Um, unless you wanna bank on the stuff from last year. And I mean, related to the other articles, it's the same, you know, these are ways that we could... Right now, it's really kind of a Wild West scenario in terms of non-residential buildings. So if you don't want to be Claremont, then someone can put up a McDonald's here, a multifamily apartment unit over there in the field next week. So I think about that, uh, as the opposite side of the coin.
Um, I just wanted to make a correction. The last time that the master plan was updated was nineteen eighty-one.
I mean, what's a decade between friends?
So with the master plan, like, do town people get to come to meetings and they get to say what they want? And now that stuff just gets...
All that gets recorded and put into the surveys and...
So, when you have a master plan and it's updated, the master plan is all about the town people. Like, the town people get to come in and they get to speak about flood problems and they get to speak about transportation for the, they get to speak about keeping your, your fields green and open and available and not having development, or maybe smaller developed areas. And what do you want to see? Do you want to see having apartment houses? Do you want to see home parks? Do you not want all of this? And you take all of this data and you holler, and then you start updating the chapters of the master plan. Communication, broadband, um, cellular towers, a ladder. How would you get out of town if Route 10 gets closed, down Loveberry Hill falls, down, down the hill? And where do we go?
Right.
And, you know, what's our emergency plan? So all of this is included to the master plan, so we all have some kind of a book uh, that we can all refer to and then start going from beyond there. And that's what the master plan is all about. And everybody gets to come in and have a say. So the places where everybody's really on the focus, we break out and have small little sections on that. Okay, so be welcome, that's what I mean.
So does the master plan also include, um, planning for schools?
Yes.
Or, okay, so that would be all part of the capital reserve?
Master plan.
Yes, okay. Uh, government buildings, schools, capital reserves?
Yeah, Christine, um, Croydon, right. I'm just curious, does it have any like legal binding? Like if, say, someone were buying a piece of property and they wanted to develop it? Do we have like, if the master plan says, no, we don't want mass development of a large piece of property? Do we have like, does that stop anybody from doing what they want with their own property? Because I'm just curious if it actually, if it's just, we're just saying that this is what we want, or if it has some actual legal binding?
So the master plan is just a guideline of what the townspeople want? Site plan regulations, subdivision regulations, those are the regulations that are built on for the master plan of what the guiding directives and principles that the townspeople are asking for. So you have your book of what everybody wants, and then you build your, your regulations off of that. But we can't build the regulations without having these updated guiding principles.
Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Okay. Article twelve. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of updating the master plan. Recommended by the select board. Majority vote required. All those in favor, please hold your microphone up. All those opposed? The motion is carried. Article thirteen. Upgrading the town clerk's equipment. Uh, you should have clarified that is the town clerk's office equipment.
Yes.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand dollars for upgrading the technical equipment of the town clerk's office. The funds to support this article are to be removed from town office building capital reserve fund. This is recommended by the select board. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to move Article thirteen, upgrade town clerk's office equipment to question.
Are they ready? Yes.
That, this means we get to use debt cards?
That's the goal.
As the ex-town clerk, um, I will say that it'll probably save money too, because there are certain things that we have to do in that office that take so many hours that could literally be cut into fractions. And you're paying us per hour to do that with the crappy equipment.
I have a scanner that can scan one page at a time.
I just want to take this moment to remind everybody how hard it was to get somebody in that office and then out of the blue, hand him a gift, a form of the food. No, I'm just saying this, because it's gonna be all, if anybody's been in there. To be able to have somebody with that amount of knowledge, that amount of personality to deal with, all of these to deal with. And then to see how we've got people in that office with the, the equipment that he's got to work with. And also the responsibility and this is what he's asking for. This is what he needs, not what he wants. So, it's all with it.
Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think she's ahead of me. All those in favor, article? Uh, Article thirteen. Upgrading the equipment in the town clerk's office. Raise your cartoon card. All opposed? I think you have a mandate. Thank you. Article fourteen. Planning board request. Request by the planning board. To see if the town will resolve to authorize the planning board in accordance with RSA six seven four colon forty-three comma one to require a preliminary review of site plans and review and approve or disapprove site plans with the development of change or expansion of use of tracts of non-residential uses or for multifamily dwellings, which are defined as any structure containing more than two dwelling units, whether or not such development units include a subdivision or resubdivision. whether or not such development units include the subdivision or re-subdivision of the site. Explanation. Adoption of this article would authorize the planning board to review and approve or disapprove site plans and to adopt site plan review regulations in accordance with RSA six seventy-four colon forty-four for the use of the types of property described in RSA six seventy-four forty-three to guard against conditions as would involve danger or injury to public health and safety. This recommendation is by planning board unanimously and is recommended by the select board as well. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to move Article fourteen, planning board request question. One second.
Motion been moved and seconded, so the question can now begin.
Hi, to morning, Chairman of the Croydon Planning Board, for sitting in the library. To Mr. Question's point. Currently, and I went back and I read forty years, actually no, sixty years of Croydon town meeting minutes. Because when I sat on the select board, excuse me, when I sat on the planning board for the first time, there were some tasks that Larry had asked and Joe had asked to do. One of them was a site plan review. One of them was an ADU policy. One of them was, what was it again?
Cell tower.
The cell tower policy. Right now, in nineteen seventy-two-ish, the town of Croydon, uh, two years, because the first year it failed, voted to have a planning board. The planning board back then was authorized to review subdivisions. And that's what the current planning board is authorized to do. So we worked for four months for this ADU, the cell tower, site plan review thing. And my experience, just so that everybody knows, I've lived in New Hampshire predominantly eighty-five percent of my life. But I spent six years as a town councilor in Derry, the fourth largest city in New Hampshire. So my experience in municipal government is pretty, pretty good. And one of the, one of my, my issues in Croydon is taxes. Because our taxes are very fragile. And our tax rate is excellent. And no, I don't want to be a Claremont. But I own four hundred and twenty acres here. And if I wanted to tomorrow, I could put seven apartment buildings in there because there's no regulation. And that would put tens and twenties of students into our schools at eighteen, nineteen, and twenty thousand dollars a student. Now, the question is asked, why not? Why change anything? Why not keep everything the same? We've operated this way for decades. That's wonderful. Southern New Hampshire is pressuring northern New Hampshire. People are moving here, people are moving here in droves. There's a housing crisis in this country. That's a fact, it's not gonna change. Right now, and maybe hope David can comment on it, but I believe New Hampshire is short on twenty-three hundred houses or something? There's a number.
Forty thousand more housing units in New Hampshire between now and twenty-thirty? And sixty thousand right now by twenty-fifty? We are nowhere near achieving that.
So, let me just, let me just illustrate a problem. We've got hundreds of acres up on Loveberry Hill. We've got hundreds of acres over on Pendleton Road. We've got hundreds of acres off of the Turnpike. You just need one developer, one wealthy, rich developer, to buy Loveberry Hill, as an example, for a million dollars and put forty homes in there. And under the current rules of our town, they would come in, they would come in for a subdivision approval. There'd be nothing we can do to stop it, we'd have to approve it. They would go in and for two dollars, they would get a building permit and they would build. There's no impact fees, there's nothing. So everything that's being done here is exactly what's being done to protect the community. Because if you guys vote for six seventy-four forty-three today, you give the planning board that power to be able to craft ordinances that will protect the town from mass development. It does not restrict anybody from building a shed, a barn, another, an ADU, or anything else they want to build on their property. That, that's fear mongering, that's not true. Planning board's not here to tell you guys what to not do on your land. What the planning board's here to do is to protect the town from mass development. And I have a vested interest in protecting the tax rate. I pay a lot of taxes. And if I pay more taxes because of silly reckless development, we all are gonna suffer from that. And I want to keep Croydon small, I want to keep Croydon developed reasonably, which is, I think we did two homes last year or three homes. That should be all that we want to do. Otherwise, we're gonna overflow the schools, we're gonna overflow the fire department, we're gonna overflow the state police, we're gonna have problems that this will protect long term as long as you have that philosophy, which is the reason why the master plan will guide what everybody wants in town, the planning board follows the guide of the master plan. The master plan is so important in that process to make sure that everybody is protected. So that's, that's the request here today.
Thank you, Jim, that was a nice explanation. I just want to note to people that as one of the state reps for Croydon, I'm on the special committee on housing at the state level. And I will be hanging around at the meeting and down the road for the school meeting and folks want to hear about some of what the special committee's looking at and provide input to me. I would appreciate that and if that's not convenient, call me any other time. And the numbers that I cited on the housing crisis are well-validated numbers because we simply don't have the housing disease. So whether we in Croydon want to be part of that solution or not is up to this community. But if we don't empower the planning board to develop ordinances, we will have no control. Not only over housing, but for instance, in Lemster, which is another community in my red district, they're getting a dirt track that appears a majority of the community does not want. There are people who do want it. But it's the second track there and they have no regulation to prevent that from happening. So we could be the same, we could have any entrepreneur come in and decide to put in whatever it is they want to put in and we have no mechanism to stop that.
All right, well, for those who just heard Jim's speech, I wish you could have been there at the November first planning board hearing because it doesn't resemble in any way what the answers I was given when I asked similar questions. I didn't understand the purpose of this request at the time. And I asked two, I wanted to ask two things. Number one, why are we doing this now? The answers I got were evasive and in some cases ridiculous. The first one being, we're not changing anything. We don't need a warrant, but we don't want to change anything, so that's rubbish. This is the way it always has been, that sort of thing. I, I got a meaningful, respectful answer on why are we doing this now? None of the talk you heard about that the developers who come in and ruin our town was brought up at the time. I don't think it's entirely accurate, I don't think, I think we have mechanisms in place that can protect us from roughshod developers. You want to ask the question, why, we've been going decades without developers ruining the town? I'm more concerned that we're moving ourselves into that direction, not that we're protecting it. I have all four, a hundred percent, protecting the town from rampant development. The last thing I want to see is the population grow up for this, for similar reasons. But those are the kind of answers I received when I raised this, that they're being addressed now that I already did. The other concern I raised was regarding, well, I guess, I mean, best to say in the explanation, approve or disprove site plans or whatever. Okay, I already discussed the meeting. But my second question was, how do we ensure that people are protected from being, prevented from doing what they could be able to do with their own property? And more importantly, that that's not applied arbitrarily or the worst situation, someone receives approval for an act, does it, puts it in a fence or whatever, and then is retroactively told they can't do it. I wasn't sure this was a bad idea, but I wanted some assurance and that there were checks and balances in place so this sort of thing would not be abused. Because I have seen it be abused many times in my life and I didn't get any of that. So the act, the discussion that this is, if we don't do this, we're gonna be overrun by Remax and every brother they have, is a bit disingenuous. If we need to build in protections to protect our town, we should pursue that specifically. But that should have been the answer that I was given when asked this very question at the planning board hearing on November first. I wasn't given those answers. I was given the same answers with higher volume every time I asked the clarification. That is not comforting and it's not comforting that things warped after asking the question, when are we here today? So I'm very skeptical about this plan. I don't know that it'd be a competitive passing, but I, I don't like the way this is all going. If we're going to regulate the hell out of ourselves, which may happen for good reason, we need to do it the right way and not the wrong way. Because if we do it wrong, we're gonna tie our hands and quite possibly tie, get ourselves in a position where we can't stop somebody from doing something they want with the town. People have been to meet, recent meetings have heard whispers about people who very much would like to blow up the town, big numbers. And there are people on purpose, towns, Claremont, whether you want to believe it or not, I hope we don't find out the hard way that I'm right about this. So I would, I would reject Article fourteen.
Yeah, I just want to clarify some confusion because like Jim said in the introduction. So right now, there's no, this is to get power for the board to develop site plan regulation and review process, which right now, we cannot legally even do that. And so there was confusion because we did have some public hearings in November when we were mistakenly thought we already had that power. Because like you said, we went through sixty years of meeting minutes to determine whether we did, talking with the New Hampshire Municipal Association to determine that we did it. So part of the confusion was that we did have hearings to, you know, have drafts of potential site plan regulations with the hopes that those actual regulations were gonna be getting voted on. But then we found out we can't actually approve or disprove or do anything with those right now the way it is. So that, I think, is part of the confusion. And then to talk into the second part of that is, you know, this is a process. It's just because if this gets approved, it doesn't mean these exist automatically and that there's no input from the community. It's just to say we can, we can do the process. And the process, similar to a master plan, you know, there's a, a sequence of, you know, meetings, discussions, public hearings, which are required by law, and things before you can even adopt those. So it's not like this is studying, we're not approving some sort of site plan regulation right now if this is voted on. It's just saying we could and the town can provide few days.
Hi, Kathy Waitkin, question. Uh, just a clarifying question, I was wondering, meaning for you, Jim, uh, would this also include things like Airbnb's or verbos or like, prevent people from setting up, you know, ten shipping containers to rent out? Because I know that's also happening in a lot of really small towns, I know there are a couple already on the rocky mound. Uh, so I just wondered if this would also kind of answer that?
Um, so the answer is yes. That would, that would do that, that would also be under the state's ADU policy. So the state legislature is working on an ADU policy that actually Rep. Joe Alexander and Rep. Hookdane are working on.
Can you just explain what ADU is? Because I know that it's about...
Accessory, yeah, I mean, an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit, which means that...
More of a lower apartment.
Yeah, so they, so they basically, they passed a law on the, I think it was Maggie Passon who did it, right? So and they said that, look, there's a lot to combat the housing problem. You could build in addition, attached to your house, initially when the law came out, had it attached. Now the legislation has moved so it can be detached.
That hasn't passed yet.
That hasn't passed, correct. But that's what the legislation is moving forward with now. What happened with the November, and I just want to clarify, what happened with the November first planning board meeting is, as I said earlier, Larry and Joe Marco were working on these things and moving these things down. And when I asked Larry what our authority was after that, after that meeting, I didn't get a good answer. And we have a lot of issues with our, with our rules here being so antiquated. So I reached out to NHMA and that's when I went back through the forty years of public meetings because what Mr. Boculay, who's the attorney of NHMA, told me was, you're not authorized. So the work that we had done for four months, we're not authorized to do. So he said you have to pass six seventy-four forty-three in order to be authorized to do that. And let me just clarify one other thing. The planning board, if you pass six seventy-four forty-three, the planning board can now go and start working on ordinances. But we don't have the authority to enact the ordinances, you do. So the ordinances will be brought, if we, if we put in ADU ordinance, it'll be brought back next year. If we put in any type of commercial development ordinance or growth and management ordinance to, to, to slow growth down, all of that gets brought back to you. Planning board doesn't have power to enact an ordinance without a vote of the people. That's the checks and balance system. The six seventy-four is not a scary thing that, that, you know, it's gonna turn us into Claremont, it's something to do exactly the opposite of that, which is really in the best interest, I think, of all factors.
Would case I make a motion to move the question?
Okay, we've had a motion to move the question, is there a second? Motion been made and seconded to move the question. So the question before the voters at this point is, are you ready to cease debate and go to the motion? So all in favor of ceasing debate, raise your cards. All those opposed? Okay, we will go to vote on the one. Article fourteen, planning board request. Request by the planning board to see if the town will resolve to authorize the planning board in accordance with RSA six seventy-four colon forty-three I to require preliminary review of site plans and review and approve or disapprove site plans for the development or change or expansion of use of tracts for non-residential uses or for multifamily dwelling units, which are defined as any structure containing more than two dwelling units, whether or not such development includes a subdivision or re-subdivision of the site. Explanation. Adoption of this article would authorize the planning board to review and approve or disapprove site plans and to adopt site plan review regulations in accordance with RSA six seventy-four colon forty-four for the use of this, of the type of property described as RSA six seventy-four colon forty-three I to guard against such conditions as would involve danger or injury to public health and safety. Recommendation. The planning board unanimously recommends this article and is recommended by the select board. Majority vote required. All those in favor, please hold your blue cards. All those opposed? The motion passes, thank you very much. Article fifteen. Adopt zoning board amendments. Shall the town adopt the zoning board amendments to Article nine of the Town of Croydon's zoning board rules? Article nine, Board of Adjustment. Adoption of rules. The Board of Adjustment shall adopt rules to govern its proceedings in accordance with the provisions of its ordinance or this ordinance and the provisions of RSA six seventy-six colon one as amended. Uh, one, the Board of Adjustment shall consist of five members appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Each member shall be appointed for a term of three years and one member shall be appointed in the first year, two members in the second year, two members in the third year. In the event of a vacancy occurring on the board, the select board shall fill such vacancies by appointing a member to fill the unexpired term. Each member shall hold office until a successor has been appointed and qualified. Unless sooner removed, members shall serve without compensation. And two, the select board shall appoint up to five alternate members of the Board of Adjustment as provided in RSA six seventy-three colon six. Alternate members shall serve for a term of three years. Vacancies including vacancies arising as a result of the appointment of an alternate as a regular member shall be filled in the same manner as regular members for the unexpired term. This is recommended by the select board. What is your pleasure?
I make, I make a motion to move Article fifteen, adopting zoning board amendments to question.
And I have a question.
I second.
And a second? So discussion on the article.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
So I would like to speak to this article.
Please.
This zoning board amendment was brought to the planning board by the zoning board in October. Bruce Jasper worked on this and brought this amendment to the planning board to clean up this article. At some point in time, the moderator of...
At some point in time, the moderator appointed zoning board members. And then they, moderator brought the appointees or candidates to the planning board who then went through the candidates and brought them to the select board, who then brought those candidates back to the ZBA. And it still contributed a lot of impact. This cleans it all up and brings it back to the way we appoint other board members. And so, he was following the rules and regulations of how the zoning board brings in amendments to the planning board. And the zoning board began the process, and that's why it's before now because any amendment to the zoning has to go through the town's people.
Any further questions? Hearing done. Article fifteen, shall the town adopt the zoning board amendments to Article nine of the Town of Croydon zoning board rules? Article nine, Board of Adjustments. A, adoption of rules. The Board of Adjustment shall adopt rules to govern its proceedings in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance and the provisions of RSA six seventy-six colon one as amended. The Board of Adjustment shall consist of five members appointed by the Board of Selectment. Each member shall be appointed for a term of three years. And one member shall be applied, appointed in the first year. Two members in the second year and two members in the third year. In the event of a vacancy occurs on the board, the select board shall fill each vacancy by appointing a member to fill the unexpired term. Each member shall hold office until a successor has been appointed and qualified, unless sooner removed. Members shall serve without compensation. And two, the select board shall appoint up to five alternate members of the Board of Adjustment as provided in RSA six seventy-three colon six. Alternate members shall serve for a term of three years. Vacancies, including vacancies arising as a result of the appointment of an alternate as a regular member shall be filled in the same manner as regular members of the unexpired term, recommended by the select board. All in favor, please hold your blue cards. All opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. And Article sixteen, to transact any other business that may legally come before this town meeting. Is there anything the town wishes to discuss? You cannot vote any monetary or not.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I would ask for a round of applause for the folks who have made this happen so successfully.
And I would like to recognize the members of this community who came out and voted on Tuesday. We had a forty-one percent vote, forty-one percent of our registered voters here to vote. Thank you for that. And luckily that's what I did. Only about a six percent.
Anything else? Yes, gentlemen.
I just want to let people know that the zoning board is looking for alternates.
Oh, I got one thing.
All right, that's the folks in the back. Please, we should, we should give them back their cards or whatever colored cards they are.
Um, just real quickly, if we can just consider next year, because it seems like we're, we're doing really well having turnout for this meeting. So maybe next year, um, having it at the fire department along with the school.
It's harder than this, guys.
Thanks, guys. I'm going to keep this, uh, really short. I just wanted to thank everybody this week that, um, helped vote for the elections, um, meaning everything that we, we did today. It's the year, it's, uh, every four years, we usually have four elections. So, um, I really appreciate everybody that came out and especially the people that stayed after the election too to help town. Um, we had people, um, that were working the elections, that won a lot of election, work ballots. So, I really want to thank, um, the, the individuals that stayed after the election that, that were able to help this town. And also, a big thank you to, to the two of you, you guys really pulled it together at the end to be able to reconcile everything. And I just can't thank you enough for making the insurmountable task of, 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 of life, just that much easier at the end of the night. So I would very do want to thank the both of you.
I heard a motion returned.
And lastly, uh, just a reminder that we have a Sunday meeting at one P M. And that will have babysitters available both at Croydon Village School and at the fire department for older kids and younger.
And we got it. What's going on? All in favor?
All.
All opposed? Thank you very much.